On behalf of the town of Silver City, I'm calling this meeting of the Town Council to order, and I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and following that, the salute to the New Mexico State flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, to be a symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures. Thank you, and I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. I'd like to acknowledge our town administration, our manager Alex Brown, Assistant Manager Jackie O'Leary, our clerk Alfred Sadio, our attorney Charles Credit, and Randy Hernandez, the Community Development Director. I'd also like to welcome Detective Connas, who will be representing the Police Department tonight, and also the Code Enforcement Officers. Is your assistant still here? Okay. Thanks for being here. I don't see if I'm Marshall. I'd also like to welcome members of the press as well. Next on the agenda is changes to the agenda. One of the items that was presented to me was a work session, and I've asked our clerk, Alfred Sadio, to contact all the council members, as well as those who would normally be at a work session, and set up the earliest date that he can for a work session. Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Next is ceremonies, and there are none. Next is proclamations. Since September 17, 2025, is the anniversary of the drafting of the U.S. Constitution. We would like to recognize this with a proclamation. Lucy Whitmarsh, and any of those that have come with you for this occasion, as well as any councilors who wish to participate, can join me at the podium where we'll read the proclamation. of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting improper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. Whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17 through 23 as Constitutional Week. Now therefore, I Ken Ladner, Mayor of the town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, in view of the inherent value of this, do hereby proclaim September 17 through 23, 2025, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. I hereby proclaim September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week.
Thank you very much.
And if y'all would come over here with the council. Hi, how are you? Thank you, and Ms. Whitmarsh, would you like to make a few comments?
I'd like to thank the town of Silver City for recognizing Constitution Week, and one of the reasons that the Daughters of the American Revolution, our Jacob Bennett Chapter, which is a local chapter, is participating in accepting this recognition is that, on the national level, the Daughters of the American Revolution were instrumental in having Constitution Week established. So the 17th is the day that celebrates the signing of the Constitution, and then the week following is open to any kind of interesting things that you would like to do related to the Constitution. So I thank you very much for your support for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is agenda item five, I think. Council comments. First tonight is Council Ben Coma.
I have nothing to say.
Thank you. Counselor Snyder.
I just want to thank you, Mayor, for scheduling the work session, and I think it was Alfred and you that got the parliamentary procedures for Corales Rio Rancho on Red River. Appreciate you doing that, and I think they'll be real good at the work session to be discussing parliamentary procedures to have some reference on that.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
Counselor Prince.
Thank you, Mayor Ladner. Tonight, I wish to first thank the efforts of our new Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Julian Madrid, and the new staff at the Morales Rec Center for this Saturday's opening. Walking through the halls to check out the new facility, sunrise over the Arroyo hit the new group classroom windows, and it all felt worth it just for a quick minute. Beyond Director Madrid, the efforts of town management, city employees, lobbying by the Grant County prospectors, now headed by our museum zone, Bart Roselli, Southwest Council of Governments, and Freeport's Community Foundation, among many others, saw this project through. Walking the grounds, I envisioned the new trails and could see all the efforts still to come. This felt new, as did the co-op renovations, the Lotus Center's prayer wheel, Little Walnut, 32nd Street, the waterworks, the botanical gardens, downtown benches, cleared housing lots. The town is changing and growing, and we're clearing the biggest projects started since the pause of the pandemic. This is to be lauded and demonstrates the scale of work on top of water, sewer, road, fire, and law that without, we wouldn't have a town. Let me be clear, if it weren't for the people that commit themselves to these departments, that commit themselves to this town, we wouldn't have our town. And so the kudos goes to so many more that in ways big and small create these successes. Organizing that, organizing people, marshaling their labor and resources, is a fraught position in this town. Everyone has an opinion, not everyone participates. When you make mistakes, you get raked across every social circle. When you're successful, you're asked why you didn't do it some other way. I only have to put up with a fraction of it being on council, but the small glimpses I see from our employees and officers only makes me envious of the strength of their patience and calm. These daily demonstrations of professionalism don't even begin to take into account personal histories of offense, prejudice, bullying, and abuse. Silver City has now been home for 15 years, and I'm still learning the myriad of ways people who look like me enforce division, ridicule, disenfranchisement, and poverty. In Chicago, growing up and attending school on the South Side, we spent quite a bit of time in our history classes on Jim Crow, the Great Migration, redlining, white flight, gentrification, and urban renewal. How generation after generation, the same systems would reproduce hierarchies built on subjugation, exploitation, violence, and dehumanization, even when the out-groups became the new in-groups. From Senator Carol Mosley-Bronz's candor about Chicago finally having whites and blacks standing shoulder to shoulder against the poor, to losing key figures in leadership like Jesse Jackson Jr. to depression, leadership is hard, and is hard on the people who choose to lead. The struggles we go through in our lives become fuel for the fire in our daily efforts. When I heard a Counselor Connas panel the other week that 30 years ago, the city was hiring for more money than the mines, I turned with my jaw dropped to my neighbor to whisper, "That never happens." My surprise wasn't because the work we do here in the city is less important, and it isn't because it's easier. In so many ways, the value of our work has been grossly diminished because of inequality. And when I see just how little money is moving and what few taxes we collect, especially considering the scale and depth of the challenges we're facing, I get frustrated. A sympathy I find common in folks who work for the city is a deep empathetic understanding of how difficult making it every day is, and that no one wants to be the reason to make it any harder than it has been. But we have criminals. There are derelict homes that are hazards in neighborhoods. Folks can't find places to live, people haven't paid their utility bills, taxes haven't kept up with maintenance, two schools are closing, there's a water main broken on Bullard Street, there is yet another shuffling of our medical care system, senior centers are put on 60 days' notice, we have people that are having psychotic episodes wandering the streets, businesses are broken into, owners are leaving, and I personally said goodbye to two families that left us here alone because they didn't feel safe. This very council lost a member, and our community lost his family just two years ago. These are the problems we are facing as a city. These are the concerns that we need to be pooling our resources and workers to resolve. And yes, we are making great strides. Yes, government moves slow. Yes, I am seeing progress as far as gaining a grip on these problems. I have full faith in the teams this council has funded and enabled Mr. Brown to assemble, but I'm not going to ignore the fact that even acknowledging these responsibilities, and trust me when I say there are plenty more, is something I expect staff to take on every single morning. That's what we here on council do. We have a diverse council. I know each counselor up here is looking at the same town I am from their window, and I know each counselor up here cares very deeply about this town. That is why I have no idea why we're putting any more on our plate for a federal administration that's cutting our budgets to enact a policy of police state and mass deportation. I honestly can't tell if the police have drunk the Kool-Aid about what the root of these problems are, or somehow think they're in control and will make out just fine with a little extra overtime. If we had better communications, things might not have escalated as poorly as we've seen this month. If we had an advisory board, we could have used that. I'll point to the numerous requests for closed sessions that have been denied by the mayor and town management when attempting to address concerns in private. I'll point to the grievances filed and lawsuits threatened when performing my sworn duty to address the harm endured by the public I represent. I know management cares. I know they have to make the tough calls, and I know that it's stressful. What we're dealing with as a town are problems that require people with the willingness to solve them, and those people need support. Throwing money at any of this doesn't heal the sick. Folks can't eat gold, and cash is a poor building material. I ask the citizens of our town to remember this when we're going through these hard years, and I'll ask management to remember that these towns are made better through more democracy, not less. People need confidence. People need relief. People need to trust in our democratic bodies that their interests will be fairly represented. Not everyone gets what they want, but the changes made come from the kinds of debate, discussion, and decision-making that built this country past its need for kings and robber barons. What's good for big business, what's good for the wealthy, is very different from what's good for everyone we represent. We're going to get through this, and we have a better history as New Mexicans and as Americans to prove that. Let's all try not to forget that history and have all that progress and struggle be in vain. Hope everyone has a safe Labor Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Conna.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of, I guess, thank yous. First, the Police Department. If you let Chief know, thank you for the increase in patrols downtown. I've heard from several business owners, they're really happy, they're seeing more police downtown, and it's appreciated by them. And then the last one was just for the CEO of Healer Regional Medical Center, Robert Whitaker. He hosted a town hall last week where he talked about how the hospital is going and how things are growing, and there actually are 23 specialists that are attached to Healer Regional, which was something that I did not know and that I know a lot of the other community doesn't. So they've hired a bunch of new people who are going to be taking their positions in the next couple of months. So those people who need specialists should probably check out the Healer Regional website and see if the specialist that they need is going to be provided here, because I know as someone who has a medically complex history, the less you have to travel for doctors, the better. So I think that's something really good for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few comments. Recently, a council member has made public concern that the city administration signed a contract recently with that issue we've been discussing, Stone Garden, without consulting the council. So that seemed like, the way it was worded, made it seem like a serious omission, and so I contacted our attorney and asked him to give me his opinion on that process.
Would you like it now? So in reviewing the ordinances for the town, specifically ordinance 2-198, the town manager is the chief financial officer and chief administrative officer, and one of the specific sections that applies, I think there's more than one, but the most direct is subsection nine, says that it's his obligation to let contracts necessary for the operation or maintenance of town services. And so, having not been here when that happened, but knowing that Mr. Reynolds reviewed it, I agree that I think it falls squarely within that power.
Thank you. I would also like to make a comment regarding the search for a new town manager. I want to commend the council members who are being proactive and wanting to get the search process underway as soon as possible. There are several things, however, that must be taken into consideration. First, no matter how the council proceeds with the search, it is going to take a while to go through the process and probably won't be completed before the end of the year. Secondly, the months of September, October, November, and December will be difficult to schedule the various meetings that will be required. The first two full weeks of September have municipal league commitments for most of the council members, as well as the mayor pro tem. The mayor will be out of town 10 days at the beginning of October. October will also be busy for those campaigning for municipal offices such as city council and town mayor. There will be multiple candidate forums that will provide the public with an opportunity to see where the various candidates stand on various issues. The fourth council meeting in November falls on Thanksgiving, and although that meeting can be rescheduled, it is a town holiday, and some council members and current council members may already have travel plans. The same possible conflicts can occur in December, given the Christmas holidays and holiday travel. The election is in November, and there is a potential that an entirely new council, at least two council members, will be installed at the beginning of 2026. I do not think that this council should put a new council in a situation where they do not agree with and reverse this council's decision. Many of the department heads are going to be either new or acting as they wait for the new administration to fill these positions. If the council and a new mayor waits until the new year, this will give the new employees time to learn and settle into their positions. This will create stability for the town in the future. A job description still needs to be created for the new town manager. Statements have been made by a few council members that a job description has already been created. About a year or two ago, when the manager's contract was set to expire, a committee was formed to create a job description for a new manager. But in speaking with the mayor pro tem and some members of that committee, not everyone is satisfied with the job description that was drafted. That was all followed by the town manager being given a two-year contract extension, which was set to expire in 2026. However, after the July 29 council meeting, the manager attended his early retirement announcement, stating that after attending approximately 600 council meetings, but not until the last council meeting, did that change when two councilors decided to make a mockery of the council, our community, and staff. "It is sad that it happened that way, and I won't be a part of that," he said. So here we are today discussing replacing one of the premier managers in New Mexico, or anywhere else, or anywhere else for that matter. His stellar record is unheard of for a town manager in a small town such as Silver City. He manages nine departments, 165 employees, similar to that of a CEO of a corporation, but in spite of distractions and attempts to micromanage his job by some council members who have very little managerial experience or management background or credibility of their own, in spite of this, he has done an outstanding job. For example, he has taken the leadership in developing and now implementing a regional water plan for all of Grand County that will ensure adequate water needs for all of our surrounding community members for years to come. A very recent example of his management skills is the new recreational center. Not only was the project completed on time, but under budget as well. If you're aware of different government contracts that are usually that out, this is a rare thing that occurred. Replacing Alex will be difficult, so I hope that the current council, as well as the next council, will take their time and hire the best and most qualified manager. In the meantime, we have a competent assistant town manager, business operations manager, and other city employees who have the experience and expertise to make a seamless transition. Next on the agenda is item six, approval of minutes of the regular meeting of July 29, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
I've got a question on it.
Counselor Snyder?
I've got a question on it.
Pardon?
I've got a question on the minutes before we approve them.
Yep.
Yeah, I was wondering, there, we, that whole meeting's kind of a blur, but...
Hang on just a minute, okay? Let me go through the process like we should. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Conna.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of regular meeting on July 29, 2025.
Is there a second? Counselor Ben Coma? Is there any discussion or comments?
Yes, I was, like I said, I thought the whole, the whole meeting kind of went into a blur, but when we came back, I thought we had a motion to reconsider and a vote on the motion to reconsider, and I did not see that in the, in the, it wasn't reflected in the minutes.
Alfred? Did everyone get a chance to look at these minutes, Alfred?
Yes.
Were there any corrections that were made?
Yes, Counselor Snyder made some corrections, and Counselor Prince made some corrections. After I made those corrections, I sent them out to everybody, making sure that they were good, and I heard no response from anyone.
Does that address Counselor Snyder's concern?
Yes. Yes, I asked you to come in and to show me, remember? I asked you to write it down on the minutes for me, and you didn't bring it back.
Oh, yeah, I think I emailed you.
I didn't see those ones.
Because, what was the other one? You made one correction that I had mentioned.
Yeah, and then after that, me and Counselor Prince went over it, because I believe it was in that same area that Counselor Prince and I corrected.
Anything else?
I, you know, I did not go and listen to the thing again, but I do kind of recall having a motion to reconsider, and I don't know if we ever had a vote reflected in the minutes. And it might not have been there, you know, Alfred listened to it, but I don't know if anybody else remembers that.
There was a motion to reconsider.
Yeah, I believe that's in the minutes.
Pardon?
I believe that's in the minutes, because there were several of them.
Is that in the minute?
It should be, because I picked up just about every...
But we never voted on it, is what I'm saying.
If you were to postpone it to the following, then we'll have to go through those minutes again, because it's 27 pages long.
Would you feel more comfortable with the correction you want to make?
I, does Counselor Prince have, I thought he had a comment.
Pardon?
Counselor Prince has a comment.
Counselor Prince?
And this does not include all of the revisions that I sent in.
I emailed you the last step.
You raised on that one. We were reviewing the meeting minutes, and I made sure to send that in before we had things and came by the office on that Friday. I had about another three pages that I documented for the video that we have then.
And it should be in there, because there should be, meant to say 27? 27 pages?
It's 27. I think we got up to 28, 29 when we were looking at it the other day.
No, it was, it ended up 28. I just cut it back to 27, just to move the signatures up.
This doesn't include all of the revisions that I submitted. This doesn't include all of the revisions that were submitted?
Alfred, would you meet with Counselor Snyder and make the changes that he wants to make, to make the minutes more correct? And can we not pass this and bring it to the next council meeting with the corrected minutes? Is that okay?
I'm going to change my motion.
Okay, we have a second to that?
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to change my motion, then? Withdraw the first one and change the next one?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so withdraw the first one, and I move to postpone the minutes of the regular meeting on July 29, 2025, until Mr. Sadio and Counselor Snyder can meet.
Is there a second? Counselor Prince?
Second, the motion is stated.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll see the revised minutes at the next council meeting. I would like to encourage, Alfred spends a great deal of time on these minutes, takes hours and hours and hours, and I would like, when he sends out an email asking, telling council members, "Here is the draft for the minutes of this meeting. If you have any corrections, please come and see me," I would encourage the council members to do that, so we're not faced with this kind of a situation. Next is the approval of the regular meeting of August 12, 2025. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Ben Coma?
To, I move to approve the regular meeting on August 12, 2025.
Is there a second? Counselor Prince?
Second, the motion is stated.
Any discussion or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is public input. I'd like to remind the public that there is a five-minute limit on public input, and as I call your name, please come up to the podium, put the microphone right next to where you're speaking, make sure it's on, there's a little button there on the base, and then make your public comment. First on the list tonight is Laura Shearing.
Hopefully, that's okay. Excuse me. Good evening. July 29, 2025 was a very sad day for Silver City, kind of seems like it may be continuing. I watched in total disbelief what an embarrassment to our town. The very people that are supposed to be concerned for the whole community became self-serving and self-righteous. Certain individuals were so fixated about ICE that you totally disregarded our community's safety. How dare you sacrifice our safety for your cause? If you want to do your part, make your own home a safety house. I agree, 28,000 is not very much, but it can still make quite a difference. Did you ever consider that the 28,000 could facilitate more presence, allowing the elderly woman to feel safe to come out of her house that she has owned for 50 years? Did you ever consider that it could facilitate more foot patrol? Thank you. Making it safer for that woman to bring her daughter, her mother, on a girl's trip? Instead, they were scared, worried, and won't come back. Downtown could attract more shops and restaurants and increase community... and increase community traffic. I would feel more comfortable to hire an employee, but right now, I don't want to put anybody in that position. Shame on you for ignoring the community members that feel safe every day. I don't blame City Manager Brown for not wanting to be a part of your selfishness. He had every reason to no longer want to be associated with a city council that doesn't have regard for the whole community or the respect towards him or us, the people you supposedly serve. He had every right to call you out for your rose-colored glass viewpoint. How could you be so narrow-minded not to think about the betterment of Silver City? How could it be a negative for us not to receive additional support for our town? Yet, that is the only reason, the only direction your mind went, not at the positive it could do. I will call you out too, Councilman Princes Snyder. How can you sit up there with such a negative viewpoint of Silver City? Shame on you. Shame on you for voting for a cause and not for the safety of your community. In my opinion, you don't deserve to be up there.
Next is Simon Wheaton Smith.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Simon Wheaton Smith. I'm here as a private citizen. And the only reason I'm here this evening is I want to advocate very strongly that the town does indeed adopt Robert's Rules Order, specifically the current edition, which is the twelfth. I encourage the town to look at one of the documents the New Mexico Municipal League does give to governing bodies. It's called the Rules of Procedure. It's very similar to the ones that they also give to the Planning and zoning Commission. The reason I like that document from the Municipal League is it does have extra things that are called special rules of order. For example, it enhances the motion to reconsider, since that motion has been discussed this evening. But it also adds something into it that you won't find in Robert's Rules. Robert's talks about noticing of meetings, but that is for the membership. The Open Meetings Act is, of course, definite. It's notifications for the public. And the Municipal League document in question makes sure that in those special rules of order in that document, that you're alerted to requirements of the Open Meetings Act. I've had twenty-one years, I added it up the other day, using two different parliamentary systems. And all I'm saying is I encourage you to adopt sooner rather than later Robert's Rules Law Edition. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Raul Torrieta.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors, and the rest of the town of Silver City. I would just like to acknowledge, my name is Raul Torrieta, and I'm the chief deputy assessor from Grant County Assessor. And not only that, I'm also the president of the Museum Society. And I wear many, many hats. I would just like to start off with, I was there in Baird honoring a lady by the name of Jovita Gonzalez, and I think she needs to be acknowledged. She was actually the first council, the first commissioner female. She was also the chair as commissioner. She served thirty-three years in Santa Clara and also Baird. She has had enormous awards, like you would not believe. And matter of fact, when I first came in to work for the assessor's office, I was twenty years old, and I still consider her a mentor towards me. And I just would like to say, I hope I get to see her in another forty years. So I just have to acknowledge her more than anything else. One other thing I would just like to say is that anybody that runs for office are winners. I don't care how you look at it. Win, lose, draw, whatever you want to call it. That is something else that you really have to be out there to show who you are, what you're doing. I really admire all of us that run for office, so I just want to say good luck to all of you. I see quite a few individuals on the stand over here where they're not only relatives, but they're friends. They're just people that I've known in the community. And like I said, good luck. Please, very, very important that we drew vote this November. It's very crucial in so many ways. But I would like to bring something up called the Carnitas Musica y Mas. And that's going to be a golf park in August twenty-ninth through the thirty-first. And I'm kind of excited, because I just talked to Monica from, from the Illusion Band, and they're going to open up the show on the twenty-ninth. And I do want to thank Joe Ray. We had such a wonderful conversation the other day about this, the Carnitas Musica y Mas. And there's going to be a wonderful lineup on Friday night. Illusion Band Saturday. We have the Little House of Funk. We have El Piducero, Jerry Michaels, Cuarenta y Cinco. And Sunday, we actually have, I'm really excited about this with the Pachuco dancers coming up at noon. And I'm really excited to see them. And they also have the Thirty-Five Magnum. And this is what it's all about. I am coloredblind. I don't care how you look at it. This is all mixing in with all of us, Hispanics, Anglos. I don't care what it is. Me being a county governor for the last forty-four years, I've enjoyed serving my people. I would just like to make a couple little statements. And I do want to thank, to start off, is my wonderful wife here. Here, and I'm so glad that she is my biggest support here in Grant County. Not only that, I'm very honored to be part of my Museum Society. We're still hanging on. I know we're still not able to be in the museum, but we're still working it little by little, and hopefully that you guys can actually see what is going on. And if you ever have an opportunity, come and talk to us. We do have Patsy Madrid, that's an enormous historian. Suzie Hinoza, forty-five years of accounting. You look at Rick Johnson, that's been in the society and the museum for the last thirty-one years. We have Dr. Rick Dinwoodie. Matter of fact, I think he's more grasa than a lot of people here in this community and actually around museums. And not only that, we do have Roger Tree. And he's just an amazing man that came from Tucson. And like I said, we're all sticking together. We're really, so please, if you ever have an opportunity, come and talk to us. And there's an individual that's really true to my heart, and her name is Lydia Vegas, who fight like a girl. It is amazing. We know a lot of people. We enjoy people. And once again, I know that I made a couple comments on the radio the other day, and I just, I just would like to say, Alex, you've done a phenomenal job. I've seen you on the first day you walked in. And we do come to you, we're still going to talk to you, no matter how you look at it. The only thing that I would just like to say, thank you for all the service that you guys have done. So please, if you would, the majority of our society are natives. We've lived it, we've seen it, we've heard it. Please, know the issues and come and talk to us. I'd really appreciate that. If you want to talk to us, please, we're here, our doors open, we live here. And I thank you for everything you've done, Mayor. And once again, I know this November is going to be a whole different story. And I just want to wish everybody good luck running for office. And we just say, it is very, very exciting to be a public servant. I've done it for forty-four years, and I hope I can do it for another forty years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bert Fleming?
Thank you, my name's Bert Fleming.
Can you come speak into the microphone?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes. About six months ago to a year ago, I got a call from Gretchen Tatch. Some of you may know her, some may not. She is the sister-in-law of Frank Tatch. Her husband, Richard Tatch, built the Cos Girls, World Steens Women's Club in the American Legion. She calls me up and says, Bert, I have a bunch of stuff I want to give to the American Legion. So I go to Chris's, I get the boxes full. I bring them back, and I take them over to Susan Berry to look at. I said, if you want to look at these, Susan, she used to be in the museum. So I come back to get them about three days later, and they're gone. She says, well, I get them to the museum. And I said, Susan, you had no authority to do that. They go to the American Legion. Well, now a war starts. I go over to the museum, and I say, hey, this. And they tell me, oh, we have an inventory. We can't give anything back. Then I get a letter from Gretchen on her own letterhead somebody sent her. And she said, basically, I gave you a shotgun from my grandfather who owned her, the club home, the bar called the Club Bar, the first bar in Silver City. And they never, I loaned it to them, they never get it back. I don't want them to have a damn thing. I found out the museum calls her up and says, please give us stuff. Then sent her a letter asking the same thing. So I go to Mr. Brown, and I ask, can you do something? I call it conversion, enrichment, embezzlement. He said, those are awful strong words, is what he told me. Then I have to call up Mr. Lattner and say, hey, can we get this back? And he says, we have problems with the museum, that was his words. So a little bit later, nothing happens. Then later, Mr. Brown says, you can go by and get the stuff. So I send Joe Drake, the commander of the Legion, and they, he goes by on Wednesday, and they tell him he can't have the boxes. He can't get it. So I make a few more phone calls. He goes back next week on Wednesday, and he gets the stuff. So I look at it with Carl Arson, and we look at it, and there's no inventory list with the boxes. And I say, wait a minute. They said they have inventory. Surely, they would have given the inventory back with the list? No, it's not there. And there's some very valuable stuff in there. There was, the Calypso ship died, got sunk in nineteen fourteen. It, nothing ever heard of as a Navy ship. Golding's daughter, son, or sorry, was on it and died. And in that box was his telegram from the Navy of his death and a lot of pictures of the people who were on the ship with him. That's invaluable. Well, fortunately, the American Legion gave a six-thousand-dollar donation to Gretchen. And I sit there and I say, is there not an inventory at the museum? So a little before, the Lim family, those of you who live here, do you've heard of the Lim family? The Chinese district? Well, the last surviving was Nathan. And he dies, he's a good friend of mine. His manscreege comes over here, and they, we go through Lim's house, and Susan Berry's there saying, we want this and this for the museum, and this and this. Well, I'm there when they come pick it up. And I'm thinking, they're not making a list of stuff they're picking up. How in the world they know where it goes? And some of it's very valuable. I mean, a little piece of some size of this pocketbook can be...
Mr. Fleming, you have one minute left.
Okay. There's extremely valuable stuff there, and there's no professional, because I found out they do the inventory in-house. And I'm thinking, business one-on-one, you never do in-house inventory, never. And the reason I mention this is, I really think the museum has to have some kind of inventory control. And this, and I found out a lot of the Lim stuff went to Demme. She thought it was going to stay here in honor of the Lim family. She was upset, but she couldn't do anything. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Roger Tree?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members for allowing us to speak. I have to add a little something here, because I came from Tucson and from, I grew up in Scottsdale. And if you went to any of these type of meetings in that city, you'd be one out of a million, and Tucson, one out of five million, and Phoenix. And this is just, feels really good to have a small town that you can attend a meeting like this. Second, I guess I was talking to the detective, and I just wanted to mention, this isn't from a fight. I didn't want to get on someone's list, or another list, I guess I should say. This was a surgery, so. Anyway, I came to Silver City three years ago now. And like I say, from Tucson, from Sedona, from Flagstaff, from Fort Collins, Colorado. And I sure love it here. I immersed myself in the community with Will and with the museum, I'm the vice president for Raul, and GRIP. And I have a couple other things I've been doing, volunteering. I think there, what's it, Alex, a hundred and forty nonprofits in this town? And it's just totally amazing. So hats off to all the volunteers of which the society is, is a part. Also to the police department, fire department, medical. And it's become clear to me that it's really hard to operate in a city that, with limited funding and a small population. And so everyone does a very commendable job. Let's see. I'm not a good speaker, sorry about that. All right, so it's no secret that there's been some issues with the museum. Well, I should correct that. It actually is kind of a secret. The society has taken the stance that they're going to take the high road and not broadcast problems out within the community, which hasn't always been reciprocated. But that's what we're doing. And it's been a hard road to follow, I have to tell you. We have provided the council with some documents, and I wondered if they'd been read, because this has been going on a long time. But I know you're all busy, and we'll provide more documents, and I hope you take those into consideration. I need to, I think we're all missed someone on his commendations. That's Francis, another member of the board. But I also wanted to shout out, our board members are high-quality people. We've got three people very versed in finances. Dr. Doug Dinwoodie has managed museums for a long time. Rick Johnson, Dr. Richard Johnson is a retired professor of business. And we have, full disclosure, I'm an Anglo, but we have a lot of Hispanics on the board as well. We're trying our best to be positive and look to the future where we'll have a good outcome. Let's see. So anyway, that's pretty much it. I just wanted, again, to thank the city staff, Alex as well, and all the volunteers in this town. And I hope we can move forward in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you. Jose Ray?
Thank you, Mayor, the staff, people, the public. What I'm about to say is only my opinion, and only my opinion. I am here this evening to talk about Mr. Alex Brown, current city town manager. Mr. Brown drew my tenure with you as a Silver City Town Councilor. I watched, listened, observed, of your position that you have with us. You always were very professional in all your constituents, including myself. Mr. Brown, you went way above your duties as the job. You always were very attentive to the public needs. You helped the public in more ways than we knew and we noticed. The needs, the wants, the requests that we, the public, ask from you as town councillors and workers in staff, nobody deserves to be ridiculed like you were. Mr. Prince, we had a conversation a long time ago, and I thought dearly that you will change your heart. I even, I even said, you will change. You didn't. Mr. Snyder, you have no idea how much you are hated by the town. And Mr. Prince, I Googled your name, and what I Googled and what I found out was very disturbing. Mr. Snyder, we talked at my house for over an hour, and you wanted to defund the police with a committee. I told you I was not for it, and I'm not for it. I asked you, what happens if we start a committee to oversee your committee? And it still stands. I'm very disappointed in both of you, very, very disappointed. You have no idea doing what you're doing. If you want to talk to somebody, talk to a person. Chile, Chile, man do man. Don't be behind the backs. That's your downfall. And all these people are woke people, and I do not agree with them at all. I was always very proud to be the town councillor. And when you asked, when I asked you for things, Mr. Brown, you always gave them to us. You gave them to everybody, to everybody. Mr. Brown, you always gave them to us. You gave them to everybody, to everybody that wants to do some things. With this administration that's going to be coming in, I am strongly disturbed. If the wrong people get in there, what we have been doing for the town of Silver City is not going to happen anymore. I think we will lose a lot of things, event-wise. We need to support the people that are doing things here. And one of them, the Nasa Columbus, they have a tremendous car show. Another one is the Blues Festival, the Fourth of July, the Christmas Light Parade, helping Winston with their events, the rodeo, the Taste of Downtown, arts, the museum. A lot of, a lot of things happen here in Silver. And we're all volunteers. Please, you guys, change your attitudes, change your minds. There comes a time when all things end. The events, our jobs, families, friends, we all come to an end. With that being said, Mr. Brown, I truly enjoyed you as a town manager, a public servant, boss, a man of patience, a mediator, a person of good heart and intentions. We must also not forget that you did a lot of babysitting. Que Dios te bendiga a tu y a tu familia. God bless you and your family. Enjoy your retirement, and welcome to our club. Adios por siempre.
Friends forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is reports. Mr. Brown, do you have a report?
Uh, no.
Jackie wants to read something real quick.
Ms. Alea, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I have before me a letter from the Trails and Open Space Committee, and they are giving their, a letter of endorsements. So I'll read it now for you all. Honorable Mayor Ken Lander and honorable town councils, dear sir and madam, your Trails and Open Space Committee would like to convey to you its endorsement of Mr. Shane Weigard's proposed Silver Vein Scramble Pack Borough Race. Mr. Weigard remotely attended the committee's meeting tonight and did an excellent job of answering many questions regarding this novel proposal. We believe the nature of the event is perfectly aligned with Silver City's mining history, its sometimes quirky appeal to visitors, and the diversity of its current residents. We also share Mr. Weigard's hope at the event could generate economic benefits to downtown businesses and hospitality-related enterprises throughout the town. Committee members did express some concerns about the possible impact of dozens of burrows and their handlers running along Boston Hills Trails, but of which are, many of which are vulnerable to damage if overused. We therefore would like to convey a recommendation that town staff evaluate the event's impacts, both positive and negative, with an eye to maximizing the former and minimizing the latter for future years, should the pack borough race become an annual event. Thank you for your consideration for the committee's input. Sincerely, Harry Brown, Chair.
And Madam Council, I just want to let you know that we are assisting them with lodges tax funding, to help them with advertising, since this is their first year. And I was at a board meeting at the Clean and Beautiful Grant for the Tourism Department yesterday, and we discussed this event, and they're going to, they're going to try to help out and help with advertising as well.
Does the council have any questions or comments for Mr. Brown? Thank you. Next is the listing of the names of candidates for the 2025 mayor and councillors for District Two and District Four election. This report will be given by Town Clerk Alfred Sadea.
Mayor, Council, I have a list here from the county clerk's office regarding the candidates that be running for these positions. And I believe some of them are in the audience here. I call their name, if they would like to stand up. First one would be Mayor Simon William Wheaton Smith, Dale Lane, Levi Emmett Timmons, and Councilor Guadalupe Connaught. And for District Two, councillor, I have councillor Nicholas Prince, Eric Ernest Vreeland, Jeff Andrew Housley, Jennifer R. Ryder. For District Four, well, she was District Four, I apologize. Another District Four is Mr. Victor Manias. And then we have two candidates for municipal judge, who is Mark Larry Van Baskirk, and Ogudin Orosco Munoz.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mrs. Sadea? Thank you very much, all council friends.
Just wanted to review, there's a little bit of mix on the District Two, District Four. Confirmed District Four, Jennifer Ryder and Victor Manias?
Yes, those two, yes, sir.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much for that. Next on the agenda, item nine, public hearings, and we have none. Next is item ten, unfinished business, and there is none. Next is eleven, new business. Under Agenda Item 11A is the approval slash disapproval of canceling the September ninth, 2025 regular council meeting. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Connaught?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of canceling the September ninth, 2025 regular town council meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Snyder?
A second motion.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadea.
Counselor Bingo?
Aye.
Counselor Prince?
Aye.
Counselor Snyder?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next is Agenda Item 11B, the approval slash disapproval of amended Grant County JPA for consolidated public safety answering point, PSAP. Mr. Brown?
Madam Council, we have Jesus Palacios, who's the director of dispatch, here for any specific questions you might have of him. But basically, what we're doing is remain three, three amendments to the JPA. One being is we've got a new updated software system, and it discusses how that's going to work and be addressed. Number two, the billing is going to change. It's going to change from the responding agency to the area where the, the activity happens. So even if the county responds here in Silver City, Silver City will pay for it. If it's in the unincorporated areas, the county will pay for it. Like in Hurley, even if the county or Baird or those other agencies respond, Hurley still has to pay for it, because it's serving their residents of the community. And the third change is, Gila Regional Medical Center was not a member of the JPA, even though they're one of the largest users of dispatch. They are now a member of the JPA and will be billed accordingly, just like everybody else. And with that, if you have any specific questions from Mr. Palacios, or any questions from myself?
Any questions? Counselor Ben Connaught?
If I heard you correctly, are they going to be billed according to the number of calls at a municipal, let's say they go to Baird or whatever. If there's a large number of calls for emergency services, they will bill, bill according to the number?
The, the calls to Baird, yes. And just give you an example. It's based on percentages. So say, there's a hundred calls. Fifty of them, because that's about the percentage that happened in Silver City, is about half of them, will pay fifty percent of the, of the cost to run dispatch. Then the next largest is the county, and they're probably about thirty percent. So they're paying thirty percent of the cost. And then the rest is split up between the mining district, well, the hospitals will be in there too now, that they're, they're included. So it's based on the percentage of the cost.
Counselor Prince?
Just wanted to review a quick second as far as the members of the Board of Directors. This is Section Two, Board of Directors, two dot two. Members of the Board of Directors shall be selected as follows. Each party shall appoint one member and one alternate to the Board of Directors. The party presumably is going to be the councils in the elected government, and it's going to come from town management.
The council appointed me.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Any other question? Anything else, Mr. Brown?
No, sir.
Do I hear a motion? Counselor Prince?
I move that we approve the amended Grant County Dr. Powers Agreement for Consolidated Public Safety Answering Point.
Is there a second? Counselor Ben Connaught? Any other discussion or comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadea.
Counselor Prince, excuse me, Counselor Bingo?
Aye.
Counselor Prince?
Aye.
Counselor Snyder?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is Agenda Item 11C, Mayor's Appointment to the Trails and Open Space Advisory Committee. We have received an application from Patricia A. Stola for appointment to this advisory committee. As you have read in the recommendation letter from the chair of the committee, Mr. Brown, he believes she will be a very valuable member of the advisory committee. Did everybody get a copy of his recommendation? I have also spoken with her, and was impressed with her willingness to serve. She realizes that she hasn't been too involved in the issues of the committee, although she has been reading minutes of previous meetings. I was impressed with the fact that she would be going in with an open mind, but plans to learn quickly and participate fully. Ms. Stola, would you mind standing so we can see who you are? Does any council member have a question for her? Thanks again for applying, and based on all of this, I would like to appoint her to the Trails and Open Space Advisory Committee. Are there any objections? I hereby appoint Patricia Stola to the Trails and Open Space Advisory Committee. Next is Agenda Item 11D, and in the 2025 Municipal League Annual Conference Voting Delegate and Alternate Delegate. Historically, the mayor has served as a voting delegate, and delegate, and the mayor pro tem is the alternate. However, I will not be able to attend, so I'm recommending that Counselor Connaught, as mayor pro tem, serve as the voting delegate. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Ben Connaught?
Mayor, I move to appoint Counselor Lupe Connaught to the 2025 Annual Conference Voting Delegates.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Counselor Connaught, thank you. We don't need a roll call, so all of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, nay? So the motion carries. Counselor Prince, did you vote?
No.
Okay, so it's three, three ayes and one abstention, I suppose.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to make Counselor Snyder the alternate.
Okay. Counselor Snyder has been, has made a, Counselor Connaught has made a motion that Counselor Snyder serve as the alternate voting delegate. Do I hear a second to that?
I'll see.
Counselor Ben Connaught, thank you. Any discussion? Let's do a roll call so we can be specific on who-
Counselor Bingo?
Aye.
Counselor Prince?
Aye.
Counselor Snyder?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next is Agenda Item 12, the approval slash disapproval of closed executive session pursuant to NMSA 1978, ten dash fifteen dash one, H six, meetings subject to the attorney-client privilege pertaining to threatened or pending litigation in which the Silver City Museum is or may become a participant. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Connaught?
I move to approve of closed session, closed executive session pursuant to NMSA 1978, ten dash fifteen, one, H six, meetings subject to the attorney-client privilege pertaining to threatened or pending litigation in which the Silver City Museum is or may become a participant after a ten-minute recess.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Sir.
Counselor Ben Connaught, thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadea.
Counselor Bingo?
Aye.
Counselor Prince?
Aye.
Counselor Snyder?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Before we adjourn, I just want to thank all of the public members who were here tonight and participating in your city government. We appreciate you being here. And for those who gave public input, thank you for that as well. We will now meet in the red room after a ten-minute courtesy break. We're back in session, we're back in session. Mr. Sadea, will you please conduct a roll call vote so that each council member may affirm that no matters other than the matter that was included in the motion to go into executive session was discussed?
Yes, sir. Counselor Bingo?
Aye.
Counselor Prince?
Aye.
Counselor Snyder?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Thank you.
Let the record show all council members voted aye, that no business other than that included in the motion to go into executive session was discussed. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Prince?
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Is there a second? Counselor Snyder?
A second.
All those in favor, please adjourn.